Return to open session.
Second.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
I move we adjourn to closed session.
Second.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Call the roll, please.
Waters.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
O'Kane.
Here.
Shaner.
Here.
Scott.
Here. Please stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Angel Wallace for the Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee, tell us why you want to serve.
Hello, everyone, Derek and council, Angel Wallace, and I am currently a representative of Inclusive Sioux City, I certainly currently serve as a co-chair, so this would be my second term that I would appreciate serving again on the commission, I think we've had a good new representation, we're also hiring a new staff member to assist us with the commission, so I think moving forward we'll have a very positive outlook and I'm looking forward to serving.
And I appreciate your serving on that committee.
You're very welcome.
So, thank you for your good work on it.
Yeah, and I represent the NAIA CP on the committee.
Yes. Okay.
Great work, Angel.
Thank you so much. I appreciate everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Wagner, technically you didn't have to be here, but, because you've been here in six months, but we're glad to see you, always good to see our friends from Mid-America.
You know, I was, I was told, thank you for that, I was told I had to be here and interview and I was so excited, I combed my hair today.
Yeah.
And it looks great, buddy.
Thanks, man.
Go ahead, tell us, tell us again why you want to serve.
Well, I'll go back to my previous remarks, but, no, I would enjoy the opportunity to serve, I've been looking for a, you know, kind of more of a volunteer role with the community, this is, you know, the work of the Planning Zoning Commission is kind of more my background, I've been doing economic development work for over 20 years now, and just the, you know, I've worked with the commission, I've taken things before the commission, and it's just, I think it's quite compatible with my background, my resume, my skills.
Questions?
No questions, just happy that you're applying.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. We'll go to the regular consent agenda, which is items three through nine, D, they consider those to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call votes asked for by a council member, if you want to speak on those items, please come up as I read them, if you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns, I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Three is reading of the November 25th City Council Minutes, four is acknowledging the November 12th Board of Adjustment Actions, five are motion approving the annual performance evaluation of the Human Rights Director, six is a resolution authorizing payment to Subservco for the well number two replacement project need to abstain conflict of interest, seven, item seven, eight is seven C are motions approving the annual reports, A is Museum Board of Trustees, Steve, I see your All-Americans 1962, on Facebook this week there was a 1990 All-American sign, do you have one of those? Do you know?
I did see that as well, Mayor.
The attendance and service statistics are amazing, Steve, what you have in your report, just, the numbers are just really up and you must be doing something right, so thank you. Twenty-nine thousand visitors. Okay, B is Parking and Skywalk Board of Trustees, C is the Transit System Advisory Board, A are actions relating to agreements and contracts, A is a resolution approving a Second Amendment to Development Agreement with Westland Property Management for the property at 1600 Castleman Street, excuse me, B is a resolution approving a subordination agreement with Midstates Banks for the Suland Splash Development at 3820 Highway 75 North, C is a resolution approving a contract to Subservco for the Nebraska Street Water Main Replacement Project I need to abstain conflict of interest, D is a resolution approving a contract CW Suter &amp; Son for the Art Center HVAC Replacement Project I need to abstain conflict of interest, nine are Board, Commission and Committee Minutes, anybody, see the list, anybody have any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on the consent agenda. Passes five zero, ten's a hearing in ordinance rezoning 1303 and 1315 Douglas Street, the petitioner is Lucio Torres, I'll move it.
Second.
First, a public hearing is now open, anyone to be heard. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero, anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule? No, I'll move that.
Second.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Move second and third.
Second.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Eleven's a hearing in ordinance rezoning 2915 West 52nd Street, the petitioners Harold and Dorothy Lockmiller, I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing's now open, anyone to be heard. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero, anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
Move that.
Second.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Move second and third.
Second.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Twelve's an ordinance dedicating and naming a portion of the right-of-way adjacent to 4100 block of Gordon Drive as South Mulberry Street, I'll move that. Passes five zero, anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule? I'll move it.
Second.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Move second and third.
Second.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Thirteen's a hearing in ordinance rezoning 4100 West Street, the petitioner's Kathryn Pfaffel, deferred from November 18th, move that.
Second.
Public hearing's now open, anyone to be heard. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. That passes four zero one, Mr. Moore abstains, anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
Move that.
Second.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Abstain.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Move second and third.
Second.
Moore.
Abstain.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Fourteen's a resolution approving the final plot of feral addition on property of 4100 West Street, the petitioner's Catherine Pfaffel, deferred from November 18th, I'll move that. Passes four to zero to one, Mr. Moore abstained, fifteens an ordinance amending Chapter 25.05 Site Development of the Municipal Code, first consideration was approved on November 18th, second consideration approved on November 25th, I'll move third reading.
Second.
Julie wanted to offer an amendment?
I do.
Is that, or, no, we don't have to. Wait a minute.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have to, sorry.
Okay, so we're just going to go?
Yeah, yep, you're right, my bad. No one's here to be heard. What's that? No one was here to be heard. I read it, nobody's here to be heard, so. Passes four to one, Mr. Waters, votes no, sixteen's the Sioux City Regional Convention
Must be a Monday, everyone's so quiet. Just, oh yeah.
Good afternoon, my name is Kristi Franz, I am the Executive Director of the Explore Suland, or the Sioux City Regional Convention Center, I thank the Mayor and the rest of the council for letting me speak today to update you on what we have been doing this past year.
Some shot.
So, I was just going to point out that this shot was recently, we had our marketing company come in and they did video and photo shoot for us because we needed new assets for all of our attractions, we obviously had to, you know, only pick, you know, certain attractions and things to feature during the time that they were here, but obviously since Cone Park was one of the newest attractions, we wanted to make sure we got some good photography and video of that, and so we will have a new video for the Suland area focusing on Sioux City for the NAI that will premiere later this week at the NAI tournament, so hopefully you will see it there, but I think it turned out really well. Just introduction, introductions again of the staff members, myself, Ward and Kristen, who are here with me today.
You guys don't have to stand up and be a part of this, I mean, I'm just kidding.
So, just going over the hotel motel tax collection, last year was the highest on record at $2,843,141.80, I will say that looking at the collections so far for fiscal year '25, the first quarter has come in and it's already at 1.4 million for the first quarter, so I wouldn't anticipate that, this number being much higher than next year.
Wow.
Our previous joint meeting that we had with the Events, Facilities and Tourism Advisory Board, just talked about our, I was asked about our top origin markets, and so this just kind of tells you about our, where our people are coming from, and when it says Sioux City, it's everybody out, that includes everybody 75 miles out, so when Sioux City being the highest origin market for our visitors doesn't necessarily mean people from Sioux City, it means the greater Suland area, so 75 miles and out, and so we've got most of the advertising and marketing that we do, you probably won't see in the Sioux City area because we are targeting those destinations 75 miles and out to get those people into the community. Trip shares by month, the highest for FY '24 was in June, the long, had mostly day trips and then obviously the weekend, Saturday being the biggest share of those visitors, and then Friday. Our budget, we were requested to submit the budget, which we did earlier, it was included in the handout, but then I included our budget, sent that over today, we don't have the FY ' '26 budget yet because we're not quite there, but I did include the '24 and '25 budgets for you all to review. For the events that we helped either directly support by financial support or operational support, we had a total economic impact of $50 million for the greater Suland area, which has gone up, last year, and I think that last year it was 35 million, and even with RagBri being this year, there was still, the RagBri, I think brought in close to 12 million, so, but there was a little bit more just from events that we were brought into the market. We currently have 10 hotel partners, and then we will add our 11th, which will be the Doubletree, which, I think that they were scheduled to be open in December, but I think that it looks like it may be late December, early January before they start, but we did add the Marriott South Sioux City Riverfront to our partner hotels, which has been, has been great for us. We've been involved in a lot of different organizations, not only in Suland, but in the state of Iowa, Meeting Planners International and Destinations International are two of the larger organizations, but we are still involved with South Dakota Tourism and their Tourism Coalition as well, with Leadership Suland, Kristen and our team is the, going to be the new incoming president, she served as the Special Events Chair this last year, so next year she'll be the president of that, and then all three of us sit on committees with Iowa Tourism or Travel Industry Partners, and then I sit on the board of that, so Sioux City has a lot of coverage as far as that organization is concerned. We did rebrand this year, just so we could get greater participation throughout the Suland region in hopes that we would get our neighboring communities, businesses and organizations kind of onboard with what we are doing, and I think that that's been very successful, we have had a lot of positive comments as far as that is concerned. We do have a new website, the new website allows businesses and events to put themselves on there because there's only three of us and it would take us a really long time to put, you know, to search out every business and every event, and so we highly encourage businesses in the community and people that are having events to go to our website and put their events on that community calendar because we want that to be the place that people go and check out. We've been to a lot of different trade shows, we have given out over 1,000 welcome basket, welcome bags to events that are happening in Suland, we've been to 10 marketplace trade shows, we've hosted 10 VIP planner organizations that have been here, we've sent out over 30 RFPs to different organizations that were looking to host events, we've done 13 site visits from those RFPs that we've sent out, we were selected to attend the US Travels, IPW, which is the International Powwow, we were one of five communities that were selected to go, the state of Iowa paid the registration for that booth, which was over $60,000, so we obviously could not do that by ourselves, so we were one of those communities that were included in that, so we were really glad to be part of that, first time that the state of Iowa has participated in that event in over, I think, over 14 years, so it's been quite a long time. And then as far as our marketing, which I said, like I said earlier, you guys probably won't see a whole lot of that unless you subscribe to some different magazines or you're on different podcasts or things like that, but you, we did create a new Facebook page, we didn't have control over that, so we weren't able to add any advertising, which we have rectified, so we can do the, create ads and things like that, we've also fulfilled just last year over 1,237 requests for information, where we are sending out physical guides, destination guides and visitor information to people that request that. This is another one of the new pictures that we have from our recent photography session, and so I think you'll see a lot of really neat images coming soon for marketing and to be used by our partners in the community. A couple of things that we're pretty excited about, we were able to cosponsor the influencer that came in for the Cone Park grand opening, and his, all of his podcasts and things that he did went viral, we secured three-year community partner commitments from North Sioux City and Sergeant Bluff, and then the Dakota Dunes has committed to four years of sponsorships with us. This year we are co-presenting for the NAI Women's Volleyball Tournament, just because we want that event to be, still be successful, and when they said that they lost one of their presenting sponsors, we were more than happy to step up and participate with that. Let's see, and then we have a really big announcement coming soon, and I can't tell you what it is until the state tells me that I can tell you, but it's going to be huge for the Suland area, it's going to have a huge economic impact, and cannot wait to share that information with you. Do you all have any questions for me?
Kristi, I, I have a couple.
Sure.
This, this is a good report, and I liked your presentation, just generally speaking overall, oftentimes the council will talk about benchmarks, or how do you measure your successes, and where do you see your strengths and your, and your weaknesses, and it made me think, after I was reading through some of your materials, I was wondering if there's any kind of a regional or even a national publication or publications that would rank Sioux City as far as how we stand in this type of business that you're in and that you're being successful with, is there anything like that, or what do you look at for how you measure we're succeeding, or?
Sure.
Trying to catch up in the fourth quarter, that kind of?
Right, so there are no publications or things like that that I know of, as far as being able to determine what the, like your return on investment, are, we do subscribe to the Destinations International Economic Impact Calculator, so that gives us a good breakdown of, you know, where people are coming from, how much money is spent on, you know, hotels or restaurants or retail, gas stations and things like that, so we can get that overall, all those different economic impact numbers, so we can say this is how much was generated in state and local taxes, things like that, and then I think that is one of the things in the tourism industry, that it's hard to really gauge successes, I do know that Kristen recently went to a trade show, and then we always follow up with boxes from, of Suland goodies, you know, that people, when they go to these trade shows, they don't want to carry them home because they already have a lot of things, but of the boxes that she sent out, she's already gotten two RFPs from that, just in the last, you know, few weeks, so our hotel partners are very happy with what we're doing, they've seen their occupancy reports are, are going up, and when we have our meetings with them, they're, they're really happy as well as the other communities that we partner with.
There's anything that you could change in Sioux City to make improvements, what, what would that be, if anything, maybe there's nothing.
Well, I mean, Sioux City's an amazing community, we just wish we could get more people here, one of the hurdles that we have, especially bringing bigger events that our community could host, because we have the facilities and hotels and amenities for that, is the airport, and just getting enough flights and things like that, and so that has been something that we have, you know, tried to work around, saying, well, if you fly into Sioux City or Sioux Falls or Omaha, we'll try to have a hospitality area and send a bus to come and get you, I mean, if that's what we need to do to get people here, but I would say that that's probably one of our biggest hurdles, is just the capacity for flights and the number of flights in.
So that could be significant, from what you've seen, just?
Oh, absolutely, I mean, there's probably, I mean, Gordon and Kristen can tell you just from the people that they've talked to, they said, oh my gosh, we would love to come to Sioux City for this, or, and bring this event to your community, just the airport won't facilitate the amount of people that would be coming in.
No, we work tirelessly, Mike Colette and?
Absolutely.
His team, and it's just, yeah, what do we do?
Right.
To capture, yeah, to capture that and to change things.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chris.
Absolutely, you're welcome.
I want my, my I heart Sioux City button for the presentation today, I just?
Awesome, appreciate that.
Thank you for, for bringing that back, because I feel like that's, you know, it's a staple, it's a little bit of our past, and it's a little bit of reinvention, so I think the rebranding has been successful, I will say, and I'm sure I'm not the only person, but I've, I've noticed more advertisement in the Sioux City area for Omaha, and so I think if they're spending the money to advertise in Sioux City, it's probably because we're grabbing a little bit of their market, and I, I don't have any numbers, but events seem to be popping up more often here, and it seems like more events that we host are like, you know, we want to come back sooner, we don't want to wait so long until next time, so it definitely feels like there's more going on in Sioux City, so thank you for that.
Absolute pleasure.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just going to add that I think the large tickup in our hotel motel tax revenue shows that we have more heads in beds, I think it has a lot to do with tourism, with the sports tourism, many, you know, many contributors to that, that really tells a lot, it's a, it's a good measure of the improvements that are being made, and appreciate it.
Absolutely, you're welcome.
All right, unless the mayor wants to jump in, I'll just make a couple of comments. Just wanted to say, commend, obviously Kristi, you, your staff and everyone for all the hard work that you're putting into this, to see this type of return on that investment, I think is really important, I think it's important for our partners, for the cities, you know, and different things, to just be able to tell that story of, you know, an entity that at least you're getting to see those returns on an investment, you know, we believed that we were missing some of the market and that there was more out there, and so with the right advertising, with the right targeting, we're starting to see, I mean, and so having that record number that Julie cited, I think, is really indicative of a lot of the hard work that you all are putting into this. I will say that I think, you know, some of the questions regarding a CVB, and you alluded to some of it in your presentation of, well, necessarily do you see that or not see that, and I, I'm always thinking, kind of like what Matthew said, is I'm seeing a lot of other cities that will be, you know, spamming my social media or popping up on my stuff, and I recognize that a lot of times our focus is on the outer markets, trying to bring them in, and I just think that the other role that's important to highlight that you all play is not only making sure that these conferences and individuals and different groups know about Sioux City, but they're excited to learn about the venues and hear the story, and whether it's the marketing materials, the videos, all of those types of things, I think that that's incentivizing them to come here, and then along with that knowledge about Sioux City and what we have to offer, I think the, then the additional part of it that a lot of people don't understand is, in order to get a lot of these conferences or sport tournaments, a lot of times you have to offset or subsidize some of the different parts of it, whether it's incentivizing their, or lowering their hotel costs, or the entrance fee, or what have you, and that usually comes from a CVB, which I know that all of you work hard on, so it's, you have to spend a little on the front end to be able to get the conference here, and then you use that income calculator to see, well then, what was the economic impact that that made, you know, if we, if we spent X number of dollars to bring that group here, and they spent so many nights in hotels, they ate at these restaurants, they did all of this, that's where you see the real ROI, and I think that that's, it's kind of an unknown, or just something that I think people that aren't familiar with the work of a convention and Visitors Bureau wouldn't necessarily be aware of, that you don't see where you're spending those dollars oftentimes, and that we see some of the big conferences, or we've seen at least some of them recently, I mean, you look at Sterling, not the, only the one that they just had, which wasn't as many, as many heads in beds, but I know there were some, at the Courtyard as well as the Warrior, but I think then you also look to the League of Cities and all different kinds of ones that have hosted really big events here lately, and that, that collaboration and that partnership, I think is essential to continue to bring them, Chad and I were just talking about whether it's the middle-of-the-week business, or whatever we can do to be able to tell that story and say, look, we need to be able to incentivize, bring all these here, so it's, it's showing in the results, and, and I, I hope it continues to trend that way, it's exciting to hear that Q1 is doing that well, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, so a week from today, then, December 9th, we'll have that back on the agenda for the invoice to consider to be paid, is that what, is that what you're, Kristi, I guess, I'm sorry, didn't ask that, the invoice that you presented, that will be considered next week, it'll be on the council agenda, am I?
Yes, that should be on the council agenda, is there anything else that you need me to provide?
Is that, so that's for FY '25?
'25, yes. Twenty-five, yes.
So, yeah, it's the annual allocation.
So, that'd be?
It would be for this fiscal year.
FY25 would be?
Current fiscal year, yeah. Council approved just a one-year memorandum of understanding, so it would have to be renewed.
Yeah, but what I'm trying to think-
Put it in the budget.
It is put in the budget, it's just the memorandum needs to be reaffirmed.
We have it in the budget for the FY25, okay, even based on those great numbers.
We would have to amend because we just projected on the percentage, it would have to be corrected, yes.
And those dollars are what's coming in from the hotel?
Yeah.
We just use the-
Yeah, they're not budgeted on either side.
We just use the best numbers we had at the time-
Yes.
We did the budget, and Kristi's optimistic that that might even continue to grow. So, that's on that base, 2.4 million? That it's over, over that, then we go 50%?
Yes.
That amount, is that, okay?
Yes.
That's correct.
Alright, thanks Kristi.
Absolutely.
Citizen Concerns, any citizen want to be heard, please come to the mic, state your name, please. Seeing none, Mr. Oak?
Yes, Dana Zeitler. I wanna discuss the crime in the downtown area. Since I've been back to the city, I was raised here, worked here, moved out to Nebraska, I'm back. Everything I've had since I've came into town has been stolen except what I carry, laptop, phones, wallets, bags. I think the, basically the problem is, some of our new, I hate to use the word immigrant, some of our new, I guess you could call them immigrants, I mean, people from a different background. Maybe it's gotta do with the drug problem in town for the, for, for people too. In my experience since being back here, there is a big problem with the meth, I mean, I've never, thank God, I've never taken it, but I've been offered it since I've been back. And it's a concern for the community, you have higher crime, you have, you know, stealing, I was assaulted in my old neighborhood, walking down the street, and that's a, you know, that's a concern, I love this.
Did you file police reports on this stuff?
Yes, I did, I filed the police reports on everything that's happened to me because I believe that's the way to do it.
Yep.
And I'm still working with them, I mean, I don't know, maybe you guys could help me out here, I don't know who, I mean, how does a police system work? I have a few ideas and concerns with them too, because I think some of the cases could have been handled quite differently. You know, I know, I never, you know, I attended West, I graduated from Western Illinois Tech, and I know they have a police thing there, and I respect police officers, I always have, I was taught that. But, you know, some of the cases, judgment calls weren't good, some of them are good, there's good officers too, don't get me wrong, but I just wanna see the improvement for the community, especially, you know, people like me that are down on their luck right now, but this is a land of opportunity and I don't, you know, I want everybody to get a, a, you know, treated fairly, you know, and I don't know what to do, I just wanna raise these concerns, I mean, tonight, that's my basic concern that came into my head.
Why don't you give Mr. Padmore your phone number if you've got some concerns with the police department, we'll get the chief or, or the-
And I've talked to some of them over there, I don't wanna get it wrong, I mean, they're-
Oh, that's fine.
You know, I'm not trying to, you know, I just want the citizens of the city, which I have always loved, to be protected. And my property, I've lost at least a grand at least, maybe two thousand. You know, laptops, phones, clothes, jewelry, I mean, everything I've owned pretty much, and I mean, it's not a lot, but it's what I had and some of it was pretty, you know, I'm not pretty, it was, it was, it was emotional attachments to some of it, gifts for my daughters.
Well, I'm gonna have you wrap it up, but if you wanna get Bob your phone number, he can get you in touch with some people.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Dana? Give it to him.
Anyone else? Matthew?
Had a great start to the holiday season, enjoyed having some time with, with family and friends and I'm looking forward to another holiday season, that three weeks back at school can be a very long three weeks.
Yeah.
I just wanna remind everybody to drive carefully, we had a number of accidents when the snow hit, police, fire and ambulance were very, very busy, so make sure that you take the time to slow down and drive under the speed limit if you have to, especially with the, I haven't heard yet, and that's everything.
Okay, Julie?
I don't have anything today, sir.
Alex?
Well, I would just say a few different things, I would echo some of Matthew's sentiments as I think, it's always like this reminder of people need reminding to be cautious when they're driving, I, cause we have the first snowfall, and yeah, I think I heard like nineteen accidents in twelve hours or something, but just take your time and I agree, the roads got slick rather quickly, so I would also encourage people to think about making sure or remind them to scoop and shovel your sidewalks, whether you're downtown or you're in residential areas, people pass by that area and you have a responsibility in order to make it passable, I know that I sure appreciate that, as do your neighbors or kids walking to and from school, so please be considerate of those trying to use those and pass and clean off the snow. Second thing that I would say is, some really exciting stuff happening in Sioux City, first off, obviously NAI National Volleyball Championships, I believe the teams are in today and action kicks off tomorrow, is that correct, Wednesday?
No, we have camps for kids tomorrow.
Okay, that's what it is, yeah, so-
First games are Wednesday.
Wednesday, so lots of action down at the Tyson Events Center, I would encourage people to make sure to catch a game, it's one of those things where these teams work so extraordinarily hard to be able to make it to Sioux City that it's a, it's a really big deal, and they love seeing the local crowd and people coming down to cheer them on and be a part of that, and so I really appreciate all of the sponsors, all of the individuals that go into making that happen and making these teams feel so welcome and just encourage them, encourage them and be there for them, I think they really appreciate it. The second thing I would say is it was announced today, I know that quite a few people that have been pretty excited that Nate Burgess is going to be coming back to Sioux City, so that's a huge get for the Tyson Events Center again, and so I'm looking forward to the show. My mom, yeah, had messaged me immediately, she loves his comedy and it's really hilarious and I think that it's one of those where if you don't know who he is, you should definitely Google it, or I think he probably had the funniest SNL skits of the past year, so-
Washington one?
Exactly, I thought that was perfect. Yeah, actually, I don't think he, I don't think he swears in any of his comedy and so family-friendly, but yeah, he's very funny, so that was, that was a huge get, so kudos to that team for bringing him and I look forward to going.
I think it's really cool that he sold out the Orpheum before and now they're shooting for the Tyson, like, we're just setting the bar higher.
Yeah, and, and historically comedy shows have done really well here, and so I think it's one of those, a lot of people, and there are a couple different price points for tickets, so I think it's affordable for a lot of people, so, that's all I have, mayor.
Hey, Dan?
Nothing further, thank you.
Will we adjourn?
Second?
O'Kane?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
I'll take this bad boy.